I will say.
Okay, my clock just turned six thirty and I see that we have a quorum of the city council and attendance in the room. So I will call the meeting, the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. And the first item that we're going to to address this evening is actually not on the agenda, but we would like to take this opportunity to recognize Councilman David Lowen and the service that he has given to the city of Hillsborough. And it's been many years and David, we are sorry to see you go, but at the same time, we're happy for you to continue on with whatever God's calling you to for this next stage of your life. So maybe still some coaching and maybe. And in recognition of that, I'd like if you'd come forward, we have a little token of our esteem to present to you. And I'm going to give it to you and ask you to go ahead and open it because there's some significance to it and then I'll say something else.
Well, yeah, I think you'll be okay.
A hockey puck.
No. Close. Does it twist or does it just pop?
Just flips.
Just flip it, but lips, oh, yeah, there's a hinge on it. Thank you. That'll keep me going in the right direction.
There you go. Well, if you'll show that what that compass represents is the true north that you provided to the council in your years of service and we hope that continues to point true north for you for all the rest of your days.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate that and I've enjoyed being on the council, enjoyed getting to know a lot of different people and see what all the city faces. Appreciate you all very much. That's very good.
Thank you. And now we are into some swearing opportunities. We usually try not to swear in council meetings, but in this case, we'll either be swearing or affirming. And I'm going to turn the floor over to City Clerk Daniel Bartle.
You want to keep bringing more pepper names to meetings?
We'll just go right up here. So we have three people this evening, Blake, Bye, Ronald Wilkins and Lou Thurston. And so I've got Lou, you on the top, so let's just start here. I, Louis Thurston.
I, Louis Thurston.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Blake, I've got you next. Thank you.
I, Blake Bye.
Bye, Blake Bye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of council member.
Of council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Just have you sign on this line, like. Okay. All right, Ronalds, we're ready for you. Excited to have you on board.
Excited myself.
Okay, all right. I, Ronald Wilkins.
I, Ronald Wilkins.
Do solemnly swear. Support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of council member.
Of council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Excellent. Thank you. So just have you sign right here on this line. Good to go.
Congratulations Blake and Ronald.
Thank you.
Looking forward to serving with you in the next two years and
Thank you.
we've got a lot of work ahead of us.
Yes.
Okay. The next item up on the agenda is the selection of council president. And currently our council president has been Brent Driggers. And I guess at this point I would open the floor to nominations for council president. Okay, we have a nomination for Brent Driggers.
I make a motion nomination.
Okay. Well, first we have to have a second to your nomination. So is there a second to Brent's nomination?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there, is there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to nominate and approve Brent Driggers as council president.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations Brent.
Need to change the bank card.
Don't have to change the bank card.
And next up, we have approval of our consent agenda. And under consent agenda, we have vouchers totaling two hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred forty dollars, thirty-nine cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers?
Thirty-nine cents or fifty-nine cents.
Excuse me, fifty-nine. Thank you.
Yep.
But I have to go back to the eye doctor again, I guess. Were, were there any questions or comments regarding the vouchers? All right, the next item two is minutes from our December nineteen twenty twenty-three meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections regarding the minutes? Next was the appointment of Clint Corby to an additional four-year term on the rec commission. Any questions or concerns about Mr. Corby serving another four-year term? And finally, appointment of Mayor Thurston is voting representative to the Flint Hills Regional Council. Are any questions or comments regarding that potential appointment? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Bye, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now into our first opportunity for public comment. I see we do have a member of the public online and we have Jane is here in the, in the room, I can see. So is there anybody that would like to address the council? Okay. Hearing no one wanting to address the council at this time, we will close the first public comment opportunity, move into our business items section. And that first item is consideration of ordinance thirteen eighty-two for an AH alternative housing.
Construction housing district zoning overlay for one thirteen, or one ten East Third, which is the lot directly to the west of the current house that sits out there. So to the west. It's from Kansas Home Solutions and you're here and they're here today to represent if they have, if there are any questions. We had public hearing at the planning commission and we've gone through the entire process that we set up for the AH district. Part of that process, we have to review all the plans and we went through and I think did a pretty, pretty rigorous looking at the plans. It's the second, second shot at it and you know, we had a couple of different changes and a few things. The, the planning commission recommended moving forward contingent on the plans being corrected. And then Ben, I believe is those corrections have been made to your satisfaction. So we, we actually had, we had a held a public hearing for this. We had nobody come to the public hearing. After all the, after all the talk about container homes, that was one of the things we kind of expected, but then no one, no one came. So we've got the, we had the full set of plans out there. We've received no public comment on that. Just kind of as side notes here, the financial impact, the home estimated cost of construction on the building permit is a hundred and seventy-five thousand. It's four shipping containers, three kind of together and one split in half, three bedroom, two bath, twelve hundred square feet. Sale price to be determined. We have, you know, no negative public comment. There's another opportunity here. I don't see anybody who's really interested in making that unless Jane has a comment about it or, or Rod on the, on, online there. Based on that, you know, we, the planning commission moved forward. They did their due diligence, followed the process on this. Feel pretty confident that they met all the qualifications, so they're recommending adoption of ordinance thirteen eighty-two.
Okay, are there any questions?
So this is just for one lot right now?
One lot. And if I'm not mistaken, each construction has to go through the alternative housing overlay process, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen eighty-two, alternative housing construction for one ten East Third Street. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council. Councilman Bye?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance thirteen eighty-two is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Congratulations. We look forward to seeing that, that new home.
Thank you. I'm going to bring you all.
No, we're very excited about it and you know, that's obviously one of our strategic priorities is housing and any kind of new housing and new construction is, is it going to be a good thing for Hillsborough? So congratulations and, and, and good luck with the project.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm going to excuse this.
All right, thanks, Dustin.
Okay, next item up is we are going to move into a public building commission meeting. And with Councilman Lowen officially off the council right now, is he still chairman of the public?
Chairman of the public.
Well, then I'm going to defer to you, David.
Well, I call this meeting of the public building commission to order. I believe I haven't read too much about it, so.
Minutes and then election chair.
Okay, I'd like to, to, you all have the minutes after the minute. Is there a motion to approve those moments?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, you have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, you say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I hear you. I don't hear any no's, so we're, we're ready to go with that one. That passes. Okay, move on to the, the selection of a new chair for the public building commission. Are there any nominations?
Yeah, I'd nominate Blake Bye.
I'll second that.
The nomination of Blake Bye, any, any further nominations or? Hearing none. All those in favor of Blake Bye being the next chair of the building commission, would you say so? By designating by raising of your right hand?
All right.
All right. I now officially close the meeting or adjourn the meeting of the public building commission.
Thank you again, David.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's been another, another chore that during the hospital situation that was a little heavier than, than some and you certainly stepped up to that and appreciate it.
I, I got educated. Got to see how, how lawyers duke it out.
I'll be calling you quite a bit.
Okay, so we're now back into, back into our city council meeting and we are in section eight. We have a discussion, couple of discussion items. The first is our Q four strategic plan update, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So went through and just did an update on everything where we're at. I think we ought to consider setting up another meeting, a special meeting to go through and kind of reevaluate our strategic plan since we have quite a few of them knocked off, knocked off the list. There's some things probably need to be reorganized and it might just be good to, to touch base and talk a little bit more about where we want to go with somebody that aren't in here potentially. So first thing, childcare center, the state of Kansas kind of held up, held up the review of some of the things that they have to do in order to give us approval to move forward with bidding. But bidding will start actually bids open this week. They will be let this week. And I think they are going to be due Jan, January thirtieth is what I think it is. So architects thinking twelve-month construction timeline, so potentially early twenty twenty-five, which puts us behind where we wanted to be with the childcare center, but still moving forward. Everything's still looking pretty good. They, they're getting playground equipment delivered Thursday, so it's all kind of starting to come together. Tier, tier, or tier one, goal two, housing. We talked about the land bank at our last meeting, land bank gave Midnight Housing an option on some property over there. I've been answering a lot of questions, actually a lot of, a lot of questions about this project. A lot of people are interested in signing up already, so hopefully it goes forward. They are submitting their application Friday, the first round of application to the housing resources commission and then hopefully get picked up for the second round. We should know like April on, on that one, if it's going to be a go or not. Looking at twenty-four rental units, twelve duplexes right now, owned and managed by Midnight Housing, so that's looking pretty good. Reached out to SCAD, which is South Central Kansas Economic Development District, about one of the programs they have for remodeling homes. We have three oh six West Grand in our, in our land bank. It got donated to us. It's not in great shape, but it potentially could be renovated. And I actually had a conversation with somebody else earlier or last week that they're interested in doing it. So we may end up having to put it out for bid for somebody else to come and do that. I'm not sure if, I, I think we would prefer a local person to do that remodel versus SCAD, but the idea would be that somebody would remodel it and then sell it or rent it out so that it becomes a usable housing unit again. So we're moving forward with that. Hopefully that's something that can happen with that unit. Otherwise we will have to look at tearing it down because it's in pretty rough shape. We just approved the alternative housing overlay for the shipping container home. So that's gone through that process. I feel pretty good with the process we put in place for that. It was one of those things that, you know, it can, you can handle a lot of different things in that and I felt like it went pretty well. Ben left already, but I think Ben did a great job of kind of reviewing those plans. And then we've got some very diligent members on the planning commission and they're, they're great at reviewing the things too. So I'm, I'm confident that if it's built to those plans, that it will be something that we will be okay with in the community. So and I hope that this becomes first of many for them. I know they have several more lots. Workforce goal. So the entrepreneurship center hosted the side hustle challenge in November and that went really well. Had a lot of people participate on that. The Y E C, which is youth entrepreneurship challenge is March the fourth, I think. We also have partnership going with e-communities with Marion and Hillsborough to be hosting destination creation course, which is kind of a boot camp for small businesses to improve their ability to market hourly. It's, it's a cool process. The county is also kind of signed up to do it. They, at least they gave permission, but they haven't authorized the funds yet. It's an interesting thing they've got going on with that. But I think that's going to be something that's, that's going to be happening here this year yet. We've got an advisory board set in place and we're meeting regularly, so I think with that, that the Center for Entrepreneurship is on the right track. I had some discussions with workforce one, which is the Kansas workforce region we're in. We're in the big first, so it basically covers from here all the way to the Colorado border, Nebraska and Oklahoma borders. It's a huge, huge area. Connected them with USD four-ten on some internship programs and some other assets they have. So I'm thinking that they're going to be able to work together to maybe bring in some more opportunities to, to play some of our students into paid internships or paid opportunities at some of our local businesses. So we're kind of working on that and then we've got some other talks. We're trying to still put together a trade school, but that's, that's sort of backburnered for right now. So we're doing what we can with that one. That one's probably the tricky one. I think the first two, we get, you know, childcare and housing worked out, the workforce part, it gets a lot easier, so. Moving on to our tier two goals, community development, fundraising for the second phase of the community plaza. We'll, we'll probably get going a little bit more, more in force this year and permanent signage. Hopefully we'll get done. Todd Jost, I don't know what happened. He's, he's out of, out of commission for a month, it sounds like. So we may not have that when we thought we were going to, but hopefully we'll still have it before it opened. The, the spray park opens and the pool opens, so. The rec department, Jerry and I are going to start the capital improvement planning, probably the end of this month. Trail portion, we got that already in our CIP. We've submitted a couple of grants. The e-ramp thing I told you about last time is in there too, is one that we submitted to. And then there's another grant program I'd like to get into for trails yet this year. Hopefully we can meet that. And then we've joined the Flint Hills Regional Council. Mayor is going to be the voting member on that. They have to be an elected official to be the voting member, so. They're going to be doing, they include us in their EPA planning grant and a big part of that's going to be focused on the downtown corridor development and a lot of our comprehensive plan stuff that we need to address. So I'm looking forward to that. Hopefully that'll be awarded, I think she said, in March. So kind of moving forward on the community development piece, there's still some stuff in there that I'd like to get to, but we just, we've gotten a lot done, but we're not quite there. So and there's probably some more things that need to be added in that area, frankly. Financial stability, continuing to do pretty well in that. We approved the CIP in December. That's thirteen million dollars of the projects in there, but hopefully we can kind of start chipping away at those as we move forward. And, and we really need to invest a lot more in maintenance too. The utility funds are, are getting closer to their fund balance targets. We've, you know, kept pace with regular rate adjustments every November. We've been looking at those and trying to evaluate them. And then we've got the KDHE pilot projects, which should hopefully operationally reduce the problem at the water plant here once we get that figured out. Still working on the comprehensive V schedule. Every time we open that thing up, we seem to add about three more pages to it. So we'll get to it yet this spring. Public safety, that one, we, we've got the basic plan for the fire station done. We've been working with architects and the fire station committee. Estimated cost was in excess of seven million. So now we're kind of in the phase where we need to think about, you know, this is what we want. Maybe what we need is smaller than that. And Ben, Ben and I had some conversations about trying to get that down to under five, right around five. And then council member Bye had the delegation of state and federal folks tour the facilities in December and hopefully maybe that'll, maybe that'll lead to some sort of support from them. Just looking at funding opportunities, I think probably the best route for us is going to be the USDA programs, but you know, it's, that's just a big bite, you know, it's a lot to, to look at. So I think our original build timeline will need to be stretched out into twenty twenty-five. I don't think it's going to happen this year. We're not there yet, so. Those are kind of the big, big highlights of what's been going on with that. Like I said, I think it's time that we sat back down and had another planning session and just kind of go over that and see what other things we need to do, what's, what's a priority for this group and kind of where we want to go for the next three or four years, so.
Do we want to consider moderator or we, you feel comfortable moderating the session yourself or?
We absolutely could bring in somebody. I think that would be, that, that usually is beneficial, but I think, you know, you don't want to bear the cost. I can do it too, but.
Well, I think it might be a value to, to do some investigation on that to see, see where we might find somebody that, that would be economical, that would provide a little assistance to you in that process instead of just putting all, all of it on your shoulders, so.
I wouldn't be against a moderator. I don't think it's as needed as it was the first time I went through it.
Maybe not, no.
Yeah, we got a, we've got a framework, you know.
That's, I mean, I think some of the strategic pillars here probably don't, you know, it gives you a good base to go from.
We got something to start with. We're just kind of reformulating a little bit and pushing forward.
Remind me, when did we do this? How long was it?
Four years ago.
Four years.
We started in twenty-one.
I mean, I kind of feel like we thought of it as a five-year plan.
Right. Well, it was through twenty-six, you know, so.
We took a pause right COVID and then picked it up. We, we adopted it in twenty twenty-one, so we're three years in. But yeah, it's twenty twenty-six is supposed to be when it's done, so it's time to kind of look at it again.
Is there any timeframe you're thinking of? Because I know people have, there's a lot of things to get scheduled to coordinate around.
I'm going to try to dodge sports schedules. I might try to go for that dead week in between seasons. We'll keep you posted on when we can find that.
Sometime in maybe late March then.
It'd be March, yeah. I think March would be okay.
Or maybe early March because break in there too.
I don't remember when they switch off, but.
It's right in there. I think state basketball is right, maybe right the first of March. Any questions, comments regarding the strategic plan? Everybody, is there a consensus that we need to go ahead and, and regroup and, and update it?
Wouldn't be a bad idea.
I was very encouraged at how well both Matt and Larry both kind of kept driving us back to the strategic plan. I thought that's been awesome. I, it exceeded my expectations.
A lot of times they sit on shell.
That's what, that's what I expected when we were going through it. So I've been very encouraged by what I've seen.
I like them too. They're, they're helpful for us to focus what we need to be doing, a little from a staff level, so.
Now the comments, questions. All right, but then we're going to move on to our next discussion item, which is the airport. Okay, so we're in a real soft landing.
Don't, don't belly land that thing. All right, so the airport, I don't know how much, I don't know how much y'all know about the airport. I mean, it's something we don't talk about a lot often. It's been in service since nineteen fifty-two. Thirty-two hundred feet long, forty feet, forty-four feet wide. Radioactive lights, radioactivated lights, not radioactive lights. It's got a, a windsock. It's a, it's actually a, a nice airport from a technical standpoint. Places where we have problems are our hangar. We have a shared hangar, which has a pilot's lounge, bathroom. The avionics controls are in there and then there's five stalls for planes that can go in. They kind of have to go opposite ends, tail to, tail to tip. We have a lot of trouble with that. The, the hangar wasn't built properly. It's really in bad shape. Of course, we lost the roof this summer. That's kind of a bummer. That ended up being a twenty-eight thousand dollar fix on that. So we ended up picking up ten. We've had some issues with the fuel system out there. We do sell one hundred LL, which is the low lead jet fuel. It's on a self-service system credit card. There's always something with that credit card that seems to want to go wrong. We do sell a fair amount of fuel and we've had a pretty decent year this last year in fuel, but there's been years where it hasn't been so great and that's really kind of where you make your money on that. And then hangar rentals, which, you know, aside from it being not in great shape, we get, well, we also have two T-hangers, which are individually. The, the rent is low, which is probably appropriate for the shape that it's in. But we also have problems with people not paying or, you know, moving planes in when they're not supposed to and people's kind of squatting in our spots. And when we had, we had the roof off it, we basically told everybody, yeah, we're, we're just going to clear the deck and, you know, move you out and we're going to look at some other options with this. Of course, the people have been kind of upset about that and there's been a few that do rent fairly well. There's three, I think, that rent consistently, you know, that wanted to, to come back in. And so, you know, we're, that's why we're having this conversation is should we do that? Is there some other thing we should do with that? A lot of times FAA funds small airports. We are in the, in kind of the dead zone for that. We're too close to McPherson. We're too close to Newton. We don't, you have to have ten based planes in order to qualify for FAA funding and with seven slots, it's mathematically pretty difficult to, to come up with that. They would give you a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year if you were in the FAA program. Of course, you get to take the rules with that. So we don't qualify for that. We probably never will, just unless we remove it, move the airport someplace else, which I don't think anyone wants to do. We do qualify for K dot funding and that's usually where we have done improvements in the past. They do give, it's a ninety-ten program, so K, K dot aviation will fund ninety percent of something and then we pay ten. Where we've used that in the past is resurfacing in the runway primarily and also bought the avionics. So there, there's things with that and technically K dot funding can be used to build a hangar, but they haven't done so in the last forty years, so I don't think that that's going to be an option for that. We don't really keep stats at the airport, so I don't, I can't give you a, a real accurate number of people who've used it. We can tell you how much fuel we sold and maybe that's sort of a proxy, but we do have a lot of people who do touchdowns and takeoffs there. Um, flight instructors like to use our airport just because it's, you know, fairly, fairly straightforward. Um, it can be a little bit challenging with the wind out there. So I think they like that. Uh, one of the things that's kind of probably the, the big thing that people point to is the fixed wing aircraft for, uh, medical ambulance. If you had to do a medical transport out, uh, a lot of those are done by helicopter now, life watch helicopter. That's actually more efficient to do a life watch helicopter than a fixed wing plane. Um, it really doesn't make a lot of sense. Because of the proximity to use a fixed wing plane. Uh, but you know, it's still something that's important to have out there. And it could be used in the case of, you know, if weather, for example, prevented a helicopter from flying. Uh, we do have a helipad out there too. So, um, that's an option for that as well. If you want to look at kind of the costs, we, we always lose money on the airport. Um, just straight up and just depends on how much, uh, on the, on a given year. So. You know, last year was probably our worst. Of course, we had that ten thousand dollars for the roof. Um, and there's some other deferred maintenance that's just hanging out there. We haven't done it, um, just because we don't generate. Don't generate enough really to, to say, let's, let's jump in there and spend a lot of money. You know, thirty-four, thirty-five hundred bucks a year on average, if you take it like that. Um, so it doesn't really allow us for much. Fuel sales, well, how we do fuel, we buy fuel in the bulk, uh, comes in, we fuel it up, uh, we sell it at a twenty percent markup. That's the, the margin for this on fuel. It doesn't turn over real quickly. And so what we do find sometimes is we are at a very, a very low price because we bought at a low price and are just marking up from there. We're not, we're not super great at being active and market watching and adjusting from there. We probably could do a better job with that. We just, the time. It's not really worth it for us, I guess, in the long run. Um, hangar rents, we are super low. We charge fifty-five bucks for the shared hangar and eighty-five a month for the, uh, private hangars. That's about half of what everybody else is charging. So, um, if we were to want to continue doing something with the airport, we want to make it go. I don't, I'm not advocating that we go away from the airport. I'm just trying to let you know what the situation is with the airport. And I think if, if we're going to be serious about making, uh, investments in it, we definitely need to raise the cost of, of the hangars. Um, and, and probably be more strict, honestly, with the contracts we have with people. Because we do have people who just don't pay on a regular basis and then Karen has to hunt them down. Um, and she doesn't like doing that. So, and I don't like having to do that either. I figure if someone owns a plane. They probably, you know, are, are of a, a means that they can pay their hangar rent. So right now, like, like I said, when we had this, the summer hangar, we basically told everybody, you know, we need to clear this out. And we're just going to, we're going to use part of it for storage. And I still think we probably could if we didn't have hangar spots rented out. Uh, we don't have a lot of people waiting. If you, if you want us to bring them back, I think what we need to do is revisit the, the rant again, uh, to make that work. Uh, there's also going to be some capital costs in there. Right now the runway probably needs, could use a resurfacing. It probably could go for another few, uh, another few years. That, that's a ninety-ten thing. It'll probably cost us fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to get that done. So. Um, so those are sort of the things that are hanging out there. You know, there, there are other options. You could, uh, we've, we've had, uh, somebody suggests that they build a private hangar. Of course, you could do a lease, a land lease for something like that. Um, you can, you could look for a private operator if you wanted to. I don't know if you'd have any success with that, but, uh, might be an option. Uh, we don't have a fixed based operator now. So there's no one there who can fix planes or, you know, provide advice or help you up or tie down or any of that stuff. So. Uh, you know, it's just kind of this thing that's, it's a good amenity, but it's just sort of out there. And we, we don't, we don't pay a lot of attention to it, to be honest with you, because it honestly, it feels like more headache than, than value a lot of times. But, uh, just things need to change with it. And I wanted to bring it to your attention and kind of get a feel of what y'all want to do with it.
Um, I guess in regards to the hangar rent, is there, or I don't know if it is set up. Is there any way to set up this type of auto pay for the rent? So that way you don't necessarily worry about people forgetting payments or anything like that? Just set up the one time and then it just continues to just cycle monthly? I don't know if that would be.
I think we probably, I don't know if we could do it through.
I think we have some options.
Maybe some options for that.
Maybe not be through front desk, but.
Yeah.
Options to do an auto pay for that.
And some people, you know, some people pay by the quarter. Uh, we have one guy who pays like by six month intervals, I think. And so, you know, it's been kind of loosey goosey truthfully, who probably needs to be tied down. But yeah, an automatic draft, great. Uh, you know, there's still people who try to sneak stuff in there. That's the, that's, you know, we man it, we, we go out and we look at it regularly. But people still find a way to sneak stuff in there. It's very unusual. I don't, I don't know how you sneak a plane in, but.
You know, the police used to always have to go out there and turn on the gas pumps for everybody. I'm glad they finally did away with that because we had to collect the money and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if people remember that, but we had to do that and that was a pain.
Yeah.
You'd get pretty impatient if you didn't get there, if you had something else going on and was you had to tend to. But I liked the idea, what you said about private hangars almost builder.
Yeah, I'd be, we had one person show interest, but they never, they never brought any hard numbers or anything to the table. They were just sort of like, it's added a possibility for sure.
I mean, when I look at this, my first comment is if we really are only losing two thousand dollars a year, three, three, two thousand dollars a year. I could see going, it's worth it for that. I think what I'm hearing you say is there's a lot of upcoming costs and maybe even hidden costs. That probably wouldn't be covered in that.
Yeah, we're not going to, we could break even if we up the rent and had it rented out and sold a fair amount of fuel. We would cover the operational, but it's not going to cover the capital.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's where the, that's where the stick is, you know.
And how, I mean, does that need to be done now? Or is there?
Probably a couple of years out from needing to be done.
On the hangar?
Oh, the hangar, yeah. If the hangar blew over tomorrow, I think that would be a blessing truthfully. Cause it's bad. It's just in bad shape. And we've patched it and patched it and patched it. And it really just needs to be replaced, but. You know, the cost of even a metal building, I can't imagine what it, you know, you're, you're getting into the hundreds of thousands of dollars to replace it.
And I don't even know if you could build one that small now.
I don't think so.
If you went into it, you'd probably have to do bigger.
Bigger. Yeah, I need a bigger footprint, which would be tough because the way that it's set up is really built around that space. So. We would have to move it completely, which poses a problem for the avionics, which are all in there too. And then you got to talk about pilots lounge and where you want to do all that stuff too. So.
When you get down to what, what do you see as a vision here? I know you're kind of throwing it to the floor here. Do you, you don't have one though?
I, I, I think what needs to happen for sure is the rents and that needs to change. Um, and maybe we need to look at something different with fuel. Maybe we need to be more aggressive on the fuel cost. Um, you don't want to be too aggressive because you don't want to price, price yourself out. You know, we also can't set somebody there every day looking at the fuel prices and adjusting. So.
Yeah, um, I don't, how often are the fuel prices adjusted?
Uh, whenever we get a new batch.
Okay.
So it's twice a year, maybe. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't turn over very quick.
What's involved in changing the price? You have to manually go out there and make adjustments or is it electronically?
I do not know. I don't know that one. Karen does all that.
I believe it's entering through a, a software system.
Yeah.
I don't believe.
We converted, well, that was, that was a cost we incurred a couple of years ago. We had to replace, completely replace all the credit card.
So probably at a minimum, you could probably adjust it quarterly, but maybe even monthly wouldn't be too, too far out of whack.
Yeah, you could probably make that. That wouldn't be terribly burdensome, I don't think.
There's to be a pump. So we have like a regular gas pump. You just crank it to zero and fill it up and collect the money, you know. Remember them, yeah.
So a little bit more sophisticated now, but not a, not a ton though.
No, I know. Yeah. But that's what it used to be. I'm serious.
I would say, I mean, we check it every day. The police department checks it every day. Um, but they don't, you know, go in and inspect whose planes and what.
Yeah.
Also didn't know if there was any kind of way, because, um, you mentioned with the, what was it? The flight training? Like trying to get more of that, you know, trying to reach out to them, see if maybe they'd be, be interested in utilizing the airport more for the training. That'd be a way to maybe get some steady revenue coming in.
Yeah, well, actually one of the people who rents, I had a conversation with him. He was interested in maybe doing some of that.
Okay.
I guess he does flight training and so they're maybe, maybe thinking about basing a plane in there for that.
On occasion, we are getting military flights or helicopters out here, you know, doing training. And I wonder as, uh, men now members of the Flint Hills Regional Council, if that's something we could bring up relative to Fort Riley. To see if there's some way to maybe contractually engage with them on, on something along that line.
It's not a bad idea.
Now, Tabor used to teach people how to fly and they always used the airport for that. It's kind of handy to have. But Fort Riley would be a good idea because there's a lot of times there's a lot of choppers land out there.
Yeah. But if they land, we're not getting any fee right now. Yeah. Yeah, they're usually doing takeoffs and touchdown.
Training.
Yeah.
Why we guys on the Salarina too, they got to, you know, to, to, so I'd like to come here once in a while.
We get a fair amount of that. We get a fair amount of people flying in for Tabor stuff. But we don't have, you know, we don't have any like, uh, crop, prop duster folks. There's.
Usually.
Got a couple.
Yeah.
Based up there.
Crashed out there years ago, killed a pilot.
We had a crash two years ago.
Yeah.
Guy put his, put a belly right on, didn't have his landing gear down, tore him up.
I don't know.
That wouldn't be the first time that's happened out there.
A Tabor kid one time took off, forgot to check his fuel, crashed on the road on the other side. I think I remember that. Had a few wrecks in there.
So in terms of direction for, uh, for Matt, it sounds like, uh, we would be interested in hearing a proposal that would increase. Monitor the fuel costs on a, on a more frequent basis, maybe monthly and, uh, and consider raising the rents on the hangars. Is there anything else from a financial standpoint? Do we need to be investigating that K dot ninety-ten runway grant for next year already? Is that something we need to be thinking about?
Darren brings it up to me regularly. It's a fall grant. So.
So.
He's, he's one of the, Darren is one, Darren Newfeld, our engineer is one of the experts in airport engineering in the state, actually. So you got the right guy for that. And he's always kind of pushing that.
So maybe we ought to be thinking about that for next year then.
Yeah. I mean, we're going to, if we do that, you know, we're, we're going to be fading that bill out of the general fund. I mean, that's where that's going to count.
I get it. So. But are, but you know, I'm talking about next year's budget.
Right, right.
So are you, uh, comfortable with that direction? Is that?
That's fine.
Helpful? Is there anything else that you would like to hear?
Well, yeah, I'll, uh, what I would do is propose, put something together for rents and things. Um, and then, you know, keep kind of everybody on standby, I guess, who was in there for rental. And just let them know, hey, we're, we're considering a change in that. And, you know, if you're interested in doing it, it will keep you on. Um, right now we basically have told them we're, we're going to be vacating except for the small individual hangar. So. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll revisit that with them. Ending a rent change and hopefully a contractual, maybe a contractual change too on rent agreements.
Might also investigate some wheel locks, how much those cost.
You remember an airport was grass. It used to be a grass runway years ago.
Is that right?
And they had a bond issue and made it blacked out. And I was supposed to bring in some restorants and hundreds of planes, but it didn't turn out.
Well, I mean, the limitations are, the size limits the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, what can land? What can land there? Twelve hundred pounds.
Will the hangars be nice? Wouldn't, I mean, are they, like, if we raise their rent, will it be a good place to put their plane?
We're not going to end up touching the hangar too much. Uh, it will be a functional place to keep their plane.
Okay. But I wanted to.
Call it nice.
Okay.
That may be a, that may be a nicer way of dealing with your issue than, than telling them to get out.
Yeah.
And, um, I know for the FAA, you mentioned that it's a minimum of one fifty. I know we're not eligible for that, but for the K dot. Um, is there a minimum? Would you?
No, that, I, well, I don't know if there's a minimum on the, that, that's just grant.
Okay.
Grant money and, uh, it would be just for capital projects. But the FAA money would be for operations.
Yeah.
And you own a fifty thousand.
Okay.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you meet these stipulations.
With a big bottle of fall twine stipulations.
Pretty much, yeah.
Any other comments or questions regarding the airport?
How many pilots do we have out there now? Do you know? Is anybody in all? That's what I'd like to know.
I think it's gone. I mean, just in general, I think aviation is, you know, gone down. I mean, the pricing of aviation has gotten to the point where I don't think it's, it's, uh, feasible for most people to have it as a hobby. And so.
Yeah.
You know, it's, uh, I, I would say we have maybe four or five pretty regular people.
Well, a lot of them that used to be out there passed away. I mean, we had quite a few at one time that were out there.
Yeah, general aviation is, as an industry, isn't, isn't on an upswing, I wouldn't say. So just the cost is too high.
But it's a service you need, kind of like.
Okay. You've got, got some direction there. We'll, we'll move forward with that. You can bring that to a future meeting and we'll take, take, uh, the appropriate action at that time. Uh, next item up on the agenda is our city administrators report.
Uh, I got the local sales tax numbers for you there. Uh, we're a little bit, four percent below last year, but last year was a record high. Um, so we didn't quite get to a million. I thought we were going to hit a million this year, but, um, still remains pretty strong. Even though we've lost a few businesses this year that generate sales tax, it's still pretty strong. So. Uh, that's something to look forward to as we go into the new year. Uh, Flint Hills Regional Council, uh, first meeting for that is nineteenth. Hoping to hear back about that planning and grant. And then, uh, they're going to come here. I think we're going to host them at some point this year. They're really interested in entrepreneurship and really interested in what we're doing with the Tabor Entrepreneurship Center. So should be really good. Uh, days at the Capitol, uh, the mayor, councilman by and I are going to go up on the, the twenty-fourth. We've got one-on-ones scheduled with our representatives. Um, I did hand out our statement municipal policy. They were very interested in that. They were very happy to have something in hand that was really easy to just digest. Uh, and then I'll be going, I'll be going back up, uh, for KMU day at the Capitol, I think two weeks later after the twenty-fourth. Uh, then we have a KMU board meeting. So, um, Senator Mike Fag, he's going to be our senator after redistricting takes place. He was really interested. We were having a pretty good, building a pretty good relationship with him. Uh, of course, Rick Wilborn is our current Senator, um, Senate President. Um, so we'll be, be sad to see him, but sad to see him go, but it'll, it'll be a, a nice transition, I think. So. Uh, and then of course Stephen Owens is running for Senate. So we'll have a new, new person, uh, and representative sign. Uh, we'll have our year in review for you in the next meeting. That's always fun. You never remember everything you handle in a year and it's always a staggering amount, but. Um, and then I just want to remind everybody, school bond election Tuesday, the twenty-third, it's an off time election. So remember to go out there and vote on the twenty-third. Uh, it's all in person at the Methodist Church. That's our, our polling place now. So that's all I have, sir.
Any questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll, uh, open for a final opportunity for public comment. Is there any form from the public that would like to make a comment?
Well, I guess I could say that I bought a new laundry machine that came from gyms at Enman. And they said that I had to pay Hillsborough sales tax, so I did. I hope they gave it to you and didn't.
Find out in a month.
Well, hopefully that'll help you get the, get the laundry done and make that process a little bit easier. Is there any other comments? All right. We'll now, uh, close that final public comment opportunity and move on to council comments. Councilman by.
Uh, Dave, thank you again for all the years of service here on City of Hillsboro. And thanks for helping me get my feet wet in public service. And, uh, just want to thank you. And, uh, Ronald, welcome. Um, uh, really glad to have you on board. So that's all I got.
Councilman McCartney?
Same thing, like says.
Yeah, just get an echo Blake here.
Councilman Wilkins?
Um, well, again, echoing Blake here, thank you for all of your years of service and hopefully I can, um. Try to live up somewhat to everything you've done here. And, you know, looking forward to working with you guys on the council and thank you to the constituents as well for giving me the shot. So.
Very good. Well, one final thing and, and the mayor's going to have a comment or two tonight that, uh. I was thinking about this year and, and, and you know, what, what we're facing and all the opportunities and the challenges that we're facing. And, uh, one of my historical heroes is this guy Winston Churchill. So this is my theme for this year. And, uh, one of my historical heroes is this guy Winston Churchill. So this is my theme for this year. And, uh, you know, you might think, well, gosh, what is, uh, it's no time for ease and comfort. You know, it's time to dare and endure, you know? That sounds pretty rugged, but you know what? This is a new year. It's time to step out of our comfort zone, to embrace the challenges that we've got in front of us. And persist in the face of adversity, because you know, we're going to have some adversity in this coming year. There's no doubt about it. Churchill's words emphasize the need for courage, resilience and determination. And confronting difficult times head on. Twenty twenty four will be a year of continued challenge, but it will also be a year of great opportunities. It's up to us as individuals, as leaders and as a community to decide how we will respond. I urge you to all to join me in choosing to dare and endure. Let's make twenty twenty four Hillsborough's best year yet. And to commemorate that, I've got a copy of that for everybody. So Brent. Barney, pass it down. Blake. Ronald. Danielle.
I think that's right.
Dare and endure. And if you would do me the kindness of finding somewhere in here to. Put that on the wall, maybe a command strip of some kind or something. They don't put a hole in the wall, but.
Yeah, Daniel gets mad.
Yeah. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, I call this meeting adjourned.